To log off, but we will send you a copy of the recording. So you can look back at it at your own time. And as I say, questions and answers towards the end. So we'll do some quick introductions. And then we have our chief people and customer officer Ian, who's on the call. He'll be doing a short presentation. Jill, who's here in the boardroom with us today, our head of customer experience, will be doing some presentation, a little bit of presentation. And Jonathan, who we hope is on the call as well from home, who will be doing a presentation on our health and safety area. I'll be talking to you a little bit about reviews and our presence online with regard to TrustPilot. Raz will go through some more reporting and information that we need from yourselves, especially focusing on the end of tour reporting. And then we'll do some questions and answers. So let's just do some quick introductions for the room before we continue on. So everyone knows who's here. Do you want to start?
Hello, I'm Jill. Good morning, should I say. I'm head of customer experience here at Newmarket.
Hi, I'm Sam. I work in long haul products. I look after East Coast, USA and Canada.
I am Geraldine. I look after deep south and west coast USA.
Raz doesn't need to introduce herself.
I know you all, but my name's Raz and I've spoken to every single one of you. So I'm really pleased that you've managed to join us here today.
Yeah, so thank you again for spending the time. We really, really appreciate it. And without further ado, I'll let Ian introduce himself and let's have a few words.
Hi, everybody. Am I being received? Can everyone hear me?
You are.
Okay. Fantastic. Good. It's lovely to see you all. Thank you so much for joining us for our long hauls. Our managers town hall meeting today. I can only join for 10 minutes or so for this meeting. I'm afraid I've got another meeting to get to. But I just wanted to pop on and just say hi, introduce myself and to officially welcome you all to the start of the summer 2025 season. And really exciting time for us. And as some of you will know, for the first time in our 42 year history, last year, Newmarket Holidays received our first private equity investment into our business. And that shows a huge amount of confidence in Newmarket Holidays amongst the private equity investment community. And it just demonstrates how much we're growing and demonstrates how successful we've been over the past 42 years of our history and the exciting places that we're going on our journey. And all of you play such a huge and critical part of that because you are delivering the most important part of the experience that our customers receive on holiday. And our customers are going out to our destinations to experience wish list holidays, to see places that they've always dreamt of visiting. And all of you do bring that to life in such an incredible way. We get wonderful, wonderful feedback about our tour managers. And we're so grateful and thankful to all of you to have you as part of our family and to deliver in those amazing experiences for our customers. We've got some really exciting plans underway to better support you even more as we move forward. We recognize that we need to communicate with you better. We need to, and we've got some exciting things to do to support you. And we've got different initiatives to help empower you and deliver even better service to our customers when they're on tour with you. And so a huge thank you for everything that you do. And we've got a great team of people in our head office in the UK to support you, not just Raz and Matt, but our amazing product team who you all know and have been dealing with for years and years. And we're all here to support you to make sure that you are able to deliver these incredible experiences for our customers. So a huge thank you for everything that you do. And I'm sure if there's any questions to me and I'm not here at the end, Matt can pass those on to me and I'll be more than happy to get back to you whenever. But thank you again and wishing you the very best of luck for the season ahead.
Lovely. Thank you so much, Ian. And without further ado, we'll move on to Jill.
Right, hello again, everybody. I don't think I know very many of you actually. So just to give you a little bit of background on where I fit in. I've been working for Newmarket for 14 years now. And I'm one of the longest serving members of the team. In a previous life, I was a Thompson Holidays rep. And I did two seasons in Corfu in 1986 and 1987, which obviously is some time ago now. But I hope that kind of demonstrates that I have got some kind of empathy with you. And I do have a fairly good understanding of your wrongs. So my current role at Newmarket is head of customer experience. I look after three distinct areas of the business which involve customer contact. So in the order of the customer's journey, the first area is a program change. Now, this is a small team of people who take care of customers who are affected in one way or another by a change to their booking pre-departure. So this is a change that Newmarket makes for various reasons. Last year, we processed 12,600 train bookings, if you can believe that. And so far this year, we've processed 3,185 changes. Now, a lot of these changes are completely beyond our control. A lot of them are flight changes. So we might change the times of flights. We might change the airline. Sometimes we change departure points. So some of these conversations that we have with customers are quite difficult. And we have to use our powers of persuasion to get them to retain their bookings. And obviously, all these program changes are within our kind of booking terms and conditions. Sometimes we offer some goodwill gestures to customers to try and keep the booking because obviously that's the name of the game. You'll also be aware perhaps that the nature of touring means that we have to operate with minimum numbers. And for this reason, sometimes we have to cancel tours outright. This is what we call a consolidation. And it's crucial as a business that we retain as many consolidated tours as possible. So this is like, if you like, we changed a departure date. So we might cancel something in the May and maybe we can't offer it until June or July or something like that. We have a current kind of percentage of retained bookings is 70%. So we do pretty well with that on the whole. Again, it's so crucial to the business. The second area that I want to talk to you about is customer operations. Now, this is a new team that we established last year. Going back a few years, we used to have a duty team. I don't know whether any of you were with us several years ago, but we had a duty team and it was kind of managed by volunteers around the business who took home some very old Nokia mobile phones out of ours. I was part of that, but we've progressed so much now. As Ian said, that the business is heading in a really good direction. And we needed to refine some of the areas that we look after. So we now have a slick team of five people headed up by Steph Shenson, who take care of our customers in resort. So customers have a telephone, a dedicated telephone number that they can call 24 hours before they travel or while they're actually in resort. And the sort of things that we deal with are flight disruptions. We deal with illnesses. And you know, the older faithful call that comes through to us is, I can't find my tour manager when I'm at the airport. So you might get a call from us in circumstances like that. So the UK team work from 6:00 AM our time until around about 9:00 PM our time. And we kind of, we have these, the shifts that we do are dependent on passenger numbers on the day and the times that the customers are flying. Because we know through logging and through monitoring the calls that we receive that the majority of calls that we get are when people are actually kind of in transit somewhere or another. And then through the night, so perhaps through some of your daytimes, we have some colleagues in South Africa who also man the telephone lines for us as well. So the key thing here, the key takeaway for you as tour managers is that this line is open to you to call as well. So any issues that you have that involve our customers, please do feel free to call us. We are there at the end of the phone and we're willing to help and support you, whatever the issue may be. And then moving through to customer relations. So this is the post departure stuff. So this is feedback that we get from customers once they come back from their holidays. Probably, you know, it'd be fair to say the majority piece would be complaints. We do get good feedback as well. We have a very high level of engagement with our customers. So we do get some really great feedback from people too. To give you an idea of scale, we currently have 30 open cases that we're dealing with. And in fact, the majority of those are long haul at the moment. But we can go up to around 300 in the middle of the season where we operate in some of our big events. It's really, really important that we have feedback from you wherever there is an issue of any kind, be it an issue about an individual customer or perhaps a kind of, you know, something that's affecting the whole group. At the moment, we have, we seem to have a lot of building work going on in various locations. And so we're dependent upon tour managers to let us know where this is going on so that we can then have conversations with hoteliers or DMCs to see what we can do to kind of alleviate issues for our customers. So it's really important that you get your tour reports in. Raz will talk about this later on. Your complaint forms in, if that's the case. It's better that we're informed about something rather than trying to deal with something blindly when a complaint comes in. We need your side of the story. It's so important that we have it. We hover around about 5% complaint ratio at the moment. And that's barely typical of industry standards, particularly where we have tours where there are so many touchpoints for customers. But we're striving to bring this down. And anything that you can do in resort to help us in that respect is really, really welcome. And if you need any assistance with dealing with complaint handling, then the operations team are more than happy to discuss things with you. They might refer it on to somebody in customer relations. We might get a come up with a solution together, something that will, you know, enable the customers to move on and put a lid on any complaints that they have so that they're not festering about it and then contacting us when they get back. So I would also just to say, Jonathan will talk about this as well, but any incidents that you have, anything to do with illness or accidents, please fill out your incident report form. It's really, really important. If anything to do with injury or accidents is escalated, you know, we might need to defend ourselves somewhere along the lines. And it's so much better if these forms are filled out there and then rather than us having to go back to you retrospectively and you've got to start racking your brains about what may or may not have happened. So that's, that's the three teams that I look after. But yeah, just to stress really, any issues that you have in resort, please do speak to somebody in customer operations. And hopefully we can, we could do something to turn the situation around and support you. Thank you.
Lovely. Thank you so much, Jill. Without further ado, I'll move straight on to Jonathan. Are you there, Jonathan?
Hello, hello. Can you hear me? Yeah.
Wonderful, yes.
Oh, brilliant. Okay, well, it's lovely to see everyone all together for the second time today. Some of you probably know me, have had dealings with me possibly in the past. Some haven't, so I'll do an introduction first of all. My name, as I said, is Jonathan May. I'm the health and safety officer for Newmarket Holidays. Alongside me, I have Trish Carter, who some of you may know when she was working in tour management herself. She's now working in health and safety assisting me. Basically, we're responsible for all the health and safety auditing of accommodation activities. That's within Newmarket products. We also have this log track and investigate when necessary. Any notices, incidents and health and safety complaints or reports. And this, like I've already said, is where you guys could play an essential role as the eyes and ears of Newmarket Holidays. We rely on you to report every illness, accident or health and safety issue, both minor and serious, to us swiftly and as accurately as possible. So then we are able to assess and respond appropriately. For urgent matters, your first action is obviously to phone the duty line. So we are made immediate aware of the situation. This should then be followed up by completing an incident, injury or illness form and submitting it to us as soon as possible. Now, this is critical, as we already said, because we don't really want to be down the line and having to backtrack retrospectively to gather information and to find out what happened in a particular situation or an illness. So it's really, really critical that you get these reports to us as soon as possible so we can action swiftly on our part. Some key things to remember when completing a report. Injuries and incidents include as much detail as possible or where and what happened. Keep it factual, no personal opinions. But if the customer states there was a cause, then of course, mention it in the report that the customer has stated this. Remember to ask if they need medical attention and then also to include confirmation of this in the report to say that it has been offered at the time. If you think that it's relevant, please, please do take a picture of the situation. If it's a curb, a step, stairs, or where the incident or accident has happened, you've got cameras on your phones, please do use them. Take a picture and submit it along with your report because a photo speaks a million words. So it's really helpful for us. Illnesses, obviously, we want to report all illnesses, no matter how minor it seems, whether it's respiratory or it's gastro illness. Submit a report for each one that's affected. Again, keep it factual, no personal diagnosis. None of us are doctors. So it's really important to keep it just the facts that you have. And obviously, if any customer has any comments, please do include those. If you note three or more customers becoming ill in a 24 hour period, especially with diarrhea, vomiting or respiratory, it's treated as urgent and please report it to the duty line. As this may be an indication of something more serious that we need to take swift action on our part. Of course, please again, submit an illness report for each affected customer. And please do include their symptoms, when the symptoms began and if they're finished, when they finished. Confirm that again, that medical assistance was offered at the time. Include that on the form. Please, please, please don't be afraid to ask a customer if they're feeling unwell. If you think they're unwell, please do go ahead and ask them if they are feeling unwell. So we can perhaps take action on that and you can submit a report. I think I've done five minutes. I'm trying to squeeze it so much I could talk about that.
Once again, a perfect performance, Jonathan.
Dense, condensed slice there, all the key facts. If you have any questions, please do contact us. The health and safety email address is in your handbook. So you can contact us directly or through operations guys, okay?
Thank you very much, Jonathan. Just very quickly, folks, Jonathan has lived into the duty line a few times. Just to make sure everyone's completely aware. So customer operations is effectively, in some businesses, they call it the duty office or the emergency line or the duty line. This is customer operations. So just in case, the number is on your screens now that I'm sharing and the email address. And in addition to that, only just today, we found out we've also got a WhatsApp number now. So should you have any technical difficulties getting through on the line, which you shouldn't do, but you may, then you can also WhatsApp customer operations as well, saying, look, please call me back. It's quite urgent, you've got a customer with a serious issue and they will contact you, they will call you straight back. It's 24/7, seven days a week. Please hesitate to contact them. So on to a very different subject, which is of course, post-holiday. The customers have been on tour, having a fantastic time and returning home. And what we'd really like to encourage you, I don't know how much TrustPilot is used in the US and Canada, but it's really a big thing in the UK. So we would really, really ask you to please help us and encourage our customers to go online and write a review on TrustPilot for us. This is a really simple, quick slide, just to show you the best way of promoting it. Quite often, people just send their customer the link perhaps on WhatsApp or if you've got a tablet with you and you're on a stop somewhere and people want to just quickly use your tablet perhaps to write a review. They don't need a login for it or anything. It's very straightforward. So you can send them the link or they just go onto Google, type in TrustPilot Newmarket Holidays and it comes straight up with the right hand box, write a review. Click on how many stars. And of course, more importantly, just to reiterate and remind you all that every five star review you get as a tour manager with your name mentioned, you'll receive a financial reward as well. So that's 15 British pounds for every five star review that you get on TrustPilot. So we really want to encourage you to promote this towards the end of your tours. When you're saying your goodbyes, whether they're still with you in resort, this is the last day, or whether they've already returned home. But if we could ask you to continue to really promote that. We've had some fantastic success stories already in 2025, especially on our Elvis tour. I can mention recently that Julie and Andrea had 19 five star TrustPilot reviews just for one tour. So not only did they earn some extra money, but it's also a really fantastic achievement to see their name up in likes with all those wonderful five star reviews. And also, of course, more importantly perhaps, people saying they had such a wonderful time and a lot to do with the fact that the tour manager was so brilliant. So please, please continue to promote that. Any questions, of course, email us as always at tm@newmarketholidays.co.uk. But that's just a quick slide for you. We can send this slide out to you if it helps as well. Now, we're going to quickly move on to some reporting with Raz.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for joining today. I realize it's early in the morning for some of you. So just to echo a couple of bits that Jill mentioned and a little bit about what Jonathan mentioned, the end of tour reports coming in. I have to say, long haul are actually much better than short haul doing this. But the end of tour reports are crucial. It is really, really important that we fill them out as early as possible just to make sure that we've covered everything that has actually happened throughout the course of your tour. So we usually expect those in within seven days of the tour finishing alongside your invoices. The quicker you send the invoices and the end of tour reports in one email to tour management, we will be able to distribute the invoices to the relevant product team who will check those over and submit those to finance for payment. So we try to process the invoices as quickly as we can, but it's very much dependent on if all your documentation is in. If there's been a problem on your tour, like Jonathan and Jill have mentioned about a customer falling ill, we would need the relevant documentation for that. We will wait for your documentation until we process the invoices. So it's really important you get those to us. And also, the end of tour reports are really important, just in case that we need to refer back to them. If a customer's written in to us and we need to get a little bit more background information, the customer experience team really rely on that information being there, readily available. The second point is, and I've spoken to long haul and tour managers about this a lot. And actually, a message was sent to me today reminding me. So it's good timing and it's a good coincidence. Again, I'm going to say long haul are much better at doing this than short haul. But you already, some of you in particular, Sandra is amazing at taking the best pictures. You know, they are totally, totally invaluable to us. So I would encourage you all to take as much photos, some video footage on your tour. With that comes the important point in ensuring all of our customers have consented to be in part of that. Now, what I would encourage you to do is from the very get go, once you meet your customers and you're going through your, you know, your welcome or your introductions, whether it be on the coach or, you know, once you arrive at your first location, that you obtain a customer consent. That is the customer marketing consent form. It is a register-like template. It's one form. It keeps it simple. Simply pass this around and circulate it around the group so that they can either consent or not consent to be in part of that, you know, part of that process. Once we've got that, then for you to take your photographs throughout your tour and your videos will be much more comfortable. And we will not be breaking any legislation there, basically. Once you've got all those photos, it's best to get in touch with us so we can direct you to our marketing team where you'll be able to upload those directly from your device. So I would, good question tomorrow. It is actually for the entire group. So I've just seen out there, might as well answer the question while I've seen it. So the form would be name of passenger, booking reference, signature from customer. Do you consent? Don't you consent? It's a very simple form. So if none of you have got that, you should have it within documents that are circulated around or that they are coming with your terms of hire, then let me know, basically. Nothing else to say on that. So if you've got more questions on that at the end, we can always cover them off. But it really brings us to saying a really well done because currently, our tour manager MPS score stands at 82.7. We're incredibly proud and incredibly grateful for all the hard work that you've done so far. So thank you very much. I just want to applaud you all. Thank you. It's an incredible score. We've only just implemented the question, how would you rate the services of your tour manager? And to achieve this is absolutely amazing. We just hope that this can carry on throughout the season and we keep this momentum going. I have every faith that we are going to beat the short haul team in our scores. So yeah, carry on doing all the amazing, amazing work we do. And yeah, what we'll do is we'll disconnect from the PowerPoint presentation. We'll send this to you all. But we're going to leave the screen open for any questions that you may have. If you can just pop your hand up or put the icon up, we will work around the room. So over to you guys. And if you've got any questions for any of us. Anyone? This is what happened this morning, actually. It took a bit of a while to kind of...
I had a lot of questions yesterday.
Let's kick off. Come on then.
Good morning.
Over to you, Raz. Morning.
Yeah, so I haven't worked for Newmarket in a few years. I'm just coming back on board with you. This TrustPilot thing, never used it before. So you're talking about putting our name in. Do they have to use our full name? Can they just make a reference to tour guide Russ or, you know, how will you know?
Yeah, very good question. So quite often, the customers will put their Newmarket reference when they make a review. But most people tend to write, and it's entitled to the customer what they write. As a tour manager, what you can encourage is, I've just been on the Elvis tour with Newmarket Holidays and a wonderful time. The driver Johnny was brilliant. But even more importantly, our tour manager, Russ, was amazing. Thank you so much for a wonderful time. We'll book it again for next year and five stars. So it's very disappointing when they say all those wonderful words, but they give you a four star. Because for four stars, you don't receive anything at all. So please encourage them five star. But yes, there is ability for them to put their reference number so we know exactly which tour they've been on. We reply also in the UK to every single review. There's a full reply from our customer operations team actually, on every single review. And should it be sadly occasionally a negative one, then Jill and Ian actually take a look at those personally. But we're talking about only five stars here. So yeah, they are replied to and normally the customer has a reference number on there. But we do encourage them to make sure they mention the name of the tour. Maybe not the full name of the tour, but you know, I was on the Elvis tour or, you know, whichever one it may be.
But even if they mention...
You just need a ref... Sorry, you just need a reference point to be able to track to which tour director it was.
But your name, even if it's just Russ.
Russ, exactly.
Or it's just Matt or Andy, that's enough.
Yeah, that's enough.
Don't mention your full name.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Come on tomorrow. You should have lots of questions.
I know. Yesterday I had, I had plenty to say. Today I'm just kind of soaking it all in. The only one question I have is on the end of tour report. There was a field on one of the forums and I can't even remember the exact verbiage. But I emailed Geraldine about it and I'll get with her later. And try and understand what you want in that exact field. It was like the tour code or something.
I know what you're referring to. You're probably referring to it on the, like you said, on the end of tour report, where up at the top it said, or it could be your invoice template. I'll have to remember. But it says TM number or TM account number or something along those lines. So every one of you has a unique tour manager number with Newmarket Holidays. And what that essentially means is that you have an account with us. So when we pay you, your invoices go through your own dedicated ledger. So that number is unique to you. And if you need that number, your product executives are point of call to get that, basically. Okay?
Yeah, I was going to pull up the form real quick and...
Yeah, that's all right. Sandra's, Sandra's got her hand up. So off you go, Sandra. Hello. Unmute, Sandra. Unmute. One more time. There we are. No, we still, still can't hear you, Sandra. I don't know why.
So departure code, that's what I was looking at.
Oh, one moment tomorrow. There might be a problem with your, with your... Just going to write it out here. So Sandra, if you go round.
Anybody else while we're trying to sort out Sandra's microphone issue? Any other questions at all? All right, please go ahead.
Good morning, how's everybody? Well, sorry, good afternoon for you guys. With the 24/7 number being a UK number, how soon will the WhatsApp part be set up? So that it's in a WhatsApp form and not just a number that would have to call the UK? Or is there an 800 number?
The WhatsApp number is now set up. But when I did the slide this last week, I didn't know it was set up. So we will send it out to you to our review. It's also going to be on our newsletter, which comes out on the 30th of April. But we'll send it out to you way before that. In fact, we'll do that this afternoon before we finish today.
We can put it on that guide.
Yeah, that's a good point. Sorry, that's a good point that Samantha just made, that they will also add that WhatsApp number on the tour manager guide notes. So that will be within your operational documents when you get those. As Matt said, it was only made live last week and we only found out today. So we'll make those public on all our documentation.
So we'll make those public on all our documentation. I've also got Sandra's question, even though we can't hear her. I print off TrustPilot forms. Is that okay? Yes, it is okay. You can absolutely print out the TrustPilot forms that I've sent you as a template. Some use that and make their own, you know, special design on the letterhead and paper. It's up to you. The point of the matter is that you, thank you, Tamara. The point of the matter is, is as long as the customers have got the correct link and how you enable that is down to your own unique way, shall I say. Some people like sending it to the customers individually by text message. Some people like handing out the, you know, the printout on the coach. Some people use a digital iPad and, you know, pop that around the coach. It really, it kind of really comes down to you and how creative, you know, you want to be. And Sandra's just put, I, let me just check. I add the form to my thank you cards at the end of the tour and it's a good reminder. That's a brilliant idea. That's a brilliant idea. Yeah, so and obviously, feel free, there's a big tour manager community in Canada and USA. So I know some of you know each other. So feel free to reach out to each other and, you know, get ideas. Feel free to reach out to us as well. We might know of a particular way to get through to our customers. We might think that a particular method works better. Feel free to ask us. That's what we're here for. Any other questions?
I've just replied to Tamara that the tour code is always on the front page of your paperwork. So that would be the one that you put on your invoice.
Okay. Just going to check if there's any more questions. Any more, guys? Any more questions? Eddie, Elizabeth, Pontius, I haven't heard from you guys. All good? Eddie?
All good, yeah. No, I'm excited to head out there this summer. But yeah, everything seems pretty good.
So there was a departure code and I'm assuming that's the date that the tour starts.
What departure code is?
Optional excursion report. So you have the tour code and then next to that you have departure code.
Now, you've got a unique tour ID and then you...
It was a tour manager ID and then the tour code. I don't know what...
Can we look at that, Tamara, and just come back to you on that, just to make sure we're giving you the right? We can actually, we can actually include that when we're circulating the presentation around to all of you as well.
Yeah, it's on the detailed optional excursion report where you have your tour code and then next to that says departure code. So I'm assuming that's the date.
Yeah, I assume that's the case as well. Let me check it for you, okay?
Yep.
Thank you, Laurie, for saying you found it very informative. I hope that's the general consensus around the room. Does anybody else have any questions? Feel free to...
I've just popped the WhatsApp number for Customer Operations on the screen there for you. As I say, we will send a recording out anyway, but if you wanted to make a note, it's there now. Obviously, if you've got a bad signal on your mobile or cell phone and you, but you have Wi-Fi, then that would be a great way to contact them, especially if you've got something that's quite urgent that you need to speak to Customer Operations about regarding a customer. So that's there for you.
If there's no more questions, then we'll round up. But if there is, please speak up now. I think we're all good then. So guys, we'll circulate this around. Thank you very much. It's nice seeing you all again. And I look forward to having a brilliant season ahead. Remember, long haul has to make beat short haul in TrustPilot reviews. Please, please, please don't let me down. All right, guys. Thank you. Take care.
Have a good season, everybody.
See you too. Bye.